All right, we are right at 6:30, so I'll call tonight's special meeting to order. And Jolene, can we have a roll call, please?
Council members Erickson.
Here.
Husnick.
Here.
Valento.
Here.
Roberts.
Here.
Mayor Bain.
Here. It's not on our agenda, but I'm going to invite everyone to rise and join us for the Pledge of Allegiance anyway.
The Pledge of Allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation, America, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We do have open forums on the agenda this evening. And Eugene Hurstel, floor is yours if you want to join us at the podium.
Eugene Hurstel, 10234, 204th Street North, Forest Lake. Thank you for allowing some open forum in that. I would just like to make a few comments and hope that we could come to a consensus. And I know you've done some work about, quite a bit of work, looking at different candidates and stuff. And I'm hoping that you've vetted them pretty well and, you know, to look back and see. One thing that does concern me that I did see in The Times, that Joe Ga was one of the potential frontrunner or whatever, but seeing his resume and some of the stuff that he'd only been in four months and then was let go, that does concern me a little bit. And I think it's in a couple areas that he was, you know, there or at different cities and whatever. That does consider, it kind of bothers me a little bit. You know, maybe you know better. I was in on the last administrator stuff too. I would say that maybe he wasn't vetted as well as it could have been. And then that was something that people had trouble with in the community trying to work with that administrator. People from, not necessarily on the board or whatever, but people out in the community. And then I represented the pickleball community and I was told, you know, for two and a half years, we couldn't really, we wanted to be part of Forest Lake City to combine and to work together, communicate, and things weren't happening. But then we did have that meeting and you graciously, you know, helped us out in that area. So I would be, and as a citizen of Forest Lake, I would be looking for somebody that not only works for the city, but works for the taxpayer and works for those people and is community oriented, that would like to be out in the community, to know the community, what they stand for and be part of it. So I appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to speak in open forum this evening? Jolene, anyone online?
We have attendees online. No one is indicating their desire to speak right now.
Okay. With that, we will close open forum and bring conversation back to council. Amanda, anything to tee up for us this evening?
Yes, Your Honor. Counsel, so if you recall, on last Thursday, the direction to me was to reach out to Christina and see if she was interested in the permanent position. Just for the public record, she did decline interest in the permanent position while she appreciated being considered. She, you know, had removed her name from consideration earlier in the process and has, that position has not changed, although she is open to possibly something in the future, in a couple of years, or, you know, further down the line if the timing is right and the fit feels right. Right now, she is not interested in a permanent position here in Forest Lake. So the answer for Christina is no. If you recall, on Thursday, there was, Bart from DDA had asked council to please provide their first and their second choice for the city administrator position. There was four votes for Joe Ga as the number one candidate and one vote for Christina. And then from a second place position, there was three votes, three votes for, so wait a minute, sorry, two votes for Christina, one vote for Tarek, one vote for Joe, and then one person did not include a second choice. One council member did not include a second choice. So those were the tentative sort of selections at that time. That was not an official, there was no official motion, there was no official vote taken at that time. Instead, there was, you know, we ended the meeting with council taking the weekend to explore some additional information, possibly do some further research on the candidates, do some further sort of soul searching, and then with the goal being tonight to come to some sort of a decision around the candidate pool that you have from, you know, before you from DDA, and then to consider possibly Christina, although she is not an option. I will note that DDA is not here tonight. Bart, he had to be in a different location. So if there are questions that are more DDA related, I will not be able to answer those, but I can get that information and obviously pass that along as soon as I have that. So at this point, I guess I would be looking to council for some sort of a direction. Do you want to take a vote on the candidates as they currently sit, which would be the six finalists that you had from Thursday? Although I will note that Devin Swanberg has removed his name from consideration. So it would be Joe, it would be Tarek, and then the three other candidates, Eric Johnson, Pat Omen, and Thomas Hudka. Hudka. And I can do more, but let me know if you need more setup.
Very good. Thank you, Amanda. Counsel, let's just maybe open it up with kind of just general discussion on where everyone is at and some, if anyone has thoughts they want to share. I know we've had kind of the weekend to think about it and the weekend to pull together comments. Anyone want to start, volunteer?
I think we had a fairly good consensus with Joe Ga. I mean, it came through the, we had two other committees, and his name was mentioned one time on one of them and what, three or four times on the next one. And then along with our vote too. So I'm not sure that we need to go any further. That's just my opinion.
Thank you. Councilmember Husnick, anyone else have some thoughts?
I'll share some thoughts. I don't, I've prepared a statement here and I don't like those. I always want to keep an open mind right up until a vote, but thought having this down in writing would make sure I don't forget any of my thoughts. And so forgive me, it's a bit lengthy, so I'll start. So almost immediately after the search firm provided council with a list of candidates, the overwhelming consensus by the council has been that we were disappointed in the quality of the pool based on their experience, size of the cities they previously and currently work at, and a number of concerns arise by simply doing an internet search of any of the candidates. Disappointment of the candidate pool was to the point where the mayor asked our search firm, DDA, for a meeting, which they refused. In the closed session, we were asked to come up with six finalists. Much of that meeting was spent discussing the council's disappointment in the pool, in which we challenged DDA in saying that we're not satisfied with the results of this first search and asked them to provide more candidates to us. DDA refused to do so and said to follow the process. And if not, basically threatened to end our relationship with them at that time. After much deliberation, we agreed to take DDA's strong suggestion to follow the process, which I greatly regret now. We did choose six finalists that evening and move forward with those individuals. After personally doing a deeper dive on those finalists by talking to individuals in the communities that these candidates had previously and currently are working on, doing additional online searches on top of the background check information that DDA provided, and the fact that a couple of the finalists had never even run a city that was a tenth the size of Forest Lake, I was even less convinced, confident that we had, that I'd be moving forward with any of the finalists. But was holding out hope that at least one of the finalists that could come to town for the finalists interviews would absolutely shine so that my comfort level would change and we could confidently move forward with our next city administrator. Last Thursday was a great opportunity to get to meet and ask questions of these finalists. Even though I struggle to see any of these candidates as a good fit for Forest Lake, I have no doubt they are all good people. Through the process, through the process, only one candidate for me felt like they potentially could be a good fit for Forest Lake, and that was Mr. Ga. And why he was one of my two finalists, when asked by the search firm to come up with two, but unfortunately, I honestly could only come up with one, and that's why I chose Ms. Hant as one of my finalists. As it turned out, I wasn't the only council member having the same problem coming up with two candidates from the pool, as Ms. Hant received two other votes. Since Thursday, I focused my research on Mr. Ga. I reached out to many and had many conversations and communications with a number of individuals in previous communities that Mr. Ga has worked in. Unfortunately, those communications did not provide any positive feedback. With that, I'm very concerned that Mr. Ga will not be a good fit for Forest Lake, and I will not be voting for him this evening to approve him as our next city minister. If the council would like me to read back some of the feedback and words used by these individuals, I certainly can, but I don't think it's in the best interest of anyone at this time to make them public. But I will mention one. One of the individuals I reached out to, simply on his performance, said, "What could have possibly occurred that a city, that would cause a city council to release a newly hired city administrator after just four months of a six-month probationary period?" That should speak volumes, is how he ended the conversation. Fortunately, we've had Mrs. Hant as interim city administrator for the past six months. Christina has not only kept the lights on for the city, but she seemingly has done much more in six months, as much as in the last six months, as our previous administrator did in close to six years, to move the city forward and address issues such as staffing, the airport, parks, road projects, starting a budget conversation early, and endless other items. Although she is not interested in the long-term position at time, I believe that she would be considered continuing on as our interim for an extended period of time. With having someone so capable and hardworking in the administration seat, my suggestion is that we take the opportunity to take a pause on the search, repost the position later in the year in hopes of coming up with a slate of candidates that we feel comfortable from the start, unlike this time around when we pushed back and expressed disappointment right out of the gate. We cannot fill this seat just to fill the seat. And based on what I think we can all agree was a horrible experience with our previous city administrator, we absolutely have to get this right. This is one of the most important decisions any of us on the council will make, so we absolutely need to make the right choice. And for me, I don't believe we have any finalist that I'm comfortable with moving forward. And we cannot afford to be another Marshall Town, Iowa.
Thank you, Councilmember Roberts. Councilmember Valento, Councilmember Erickson, thoughts? I'm happy to jump in as well.
Well, Mr. Roberts makes a lot of good points as far as the whole process is concerned with just the back and forth with the consultant, their unwillingness to really work with you to make sure that we're getting the right pool of candidates. I think it was very telling that one of us could only come up with one candidate, or actually, four of us could only come up with one candidate from that pool that we'd even put down for consideration. And that doesn't mean that that's the right person for Forest Lake for the next X number of years. And I would further agree that we want to make sure we get it right.
Thank you. Councilmember Valento?
I agree in that we want to get it right, and it's very difficult. This process is difficult. I don't think anyone likes to be a part of an interview, whether they're the interviewee or interviewer. And my concern is that we, four out of five of us, said that we had a top person. We all agreed to that same person, which I think is, that speaks volumes. And I think that same person is the top person from our department heads, which speaks volumes. And he was mentioned from, with the community stakeholders, which again speaks volumes. And we want to get it right, but also at what cost? Are we going to sit here and be concerned about the candidates in that if we keep pushing it off and we say, "Let's take a pause now"? Christina is only interim. I'm sure she's applying to other jobs, and then we could find ourselves in this position in a month, two months, three months, and then we're going to have to go through the same process again. And then Forest Lake is already a place that isn't too well-known for being a place that everyone wants to jump at to work. And I think, in my mind, that's a huge concern when we're already having difficulties with our keeping morale up with our own staff, that when we're sitting here looking for a city administrator and going through the process of interviewing, having difficulties with DDA, and I really think also not making it easy for DDA in that, all of that combined, it makes me concerned that if we push the interviews, if we say no to this round, push the interviews out to whatever later month this year in hopes that Christina stays on, what kind of pool are we going to get then? I wouldn't be optimistic that we get a better pool, because it would already be out in the public that we already went through this round. We pushed it off, which is very unusual for most communities, to the point that Devin already pulled his name out. And so I think if we just keep pushing it off, what is that saying to the already extremely small candidate pool within the state of city administrators to potential city administrators looking for a job? I think it says a lot, that I think a lot of people would be concerned of, well, is Forest Lake going to do that again? Because it's not an easy task to go into a job interview like the rest of us. Like, you are putting your name out in the public, you are potentially getting a data request for all of your background information. So the candidate pool is already extremely small, and if we just keep doing this, that pool is going to get smaller and smaller for Forest Lake. I do not have faith that it would get any better, honestly. And if you've talked to other people who have been in a similar situation for doing interviews, they're having difficulties finding people as well, so it just lends more to, I think we'd be setting ourselves up for a hard spot. The position we are in is not easy by any means. I didn't come in here today super excited at all. But again, I think if we just keep pushing it off, I just don't see how it gets any easier or any better.
Maybe I'll start with my thoughts before I heard everyone else's thoughts. I appreciate that we have a candidate that, you know, rose to the top and has consensus and has a track record of some great accomplishments in some past cities. My concern is I feel because of the cities where he has served, I don't have a great amount of familiarity with those communities. I don't have, the professionals that we work with, there's no cross-pollination of those professionals. And so where some other candidates, we either have some knowledge of that community, we know people who work in that community, you just have a broader frame of reference of what that candidate might mean for Forest Lake and whether or not they're a fit. I don't have that sense with Mr. Ga, again, just because of the geography of where he has served and just the lack of crossover pollination of information. That was the same situation I found myself in when I voted for Patrick. And that, in hindsight, there is information that was out in the public realm that had we done a deeper reference check, there was information that could have come to our attention, that we did not do that deeper reference check, and so we don't know. Also, I will definitely acknowledge the comments that have already been made over the quality of the candidate pool. So if we were sitting in this position with a really strong candidate pool, and we have one person that has risen to the top of a really strong candidate pool, that's great, right? Like, process of elimination, feel strong about, again, that quality of that candidate. I can't say that here. I couldn't say that back when we were in the semifinalist round, and I also can't say it now where we sit. And so because it's the last person standing, I'm not sure that that is the threshold that gets me 100% comfortable that he's the right person for the job. Again, he might be, and so I find myself in this position of not knowing. I appreciate Councilmember Roberts has done a lot of background check and a lot of addition, you know, has made a lot of calls. You've put a lot of work into this. It's really, really admirable. But then, this is unconventional, but my thought as I drove into the parking lot, just wondering, gosh, what is our next step? Something that dawned on me is, we are a public entity. We have a background check process that if you are going to be a Forest Lake police officer, if you're going to be a Forest Lake firefighter, we have a background check process that goes way beyond what we just did for our top city official who has, you know, financial responsibility, moral responsibility, leadership responsibility for everybody that's in this building, right, and the responsibility of the community. That threshold is much higher, and I wouldn't suggest we need a police-level background check, but there is a broader level of reference and background check that certainly could be done in advance of a second interview, just to, again, bring more information to the table. Because the minute we make, if we make this decision tonight, the internet's going to bring all of that information to us, and we've got, we have no response and he has no response, right? Or we haven't prepared for, okay, yes, this was a thing that happened, and there's just, we're flat-footed, and I just feel like that's a bad way to start a potential relationship. If there's anything out there, I don't, I'm not, you mentioned you had some, received some feedback that may or may not be validated, and we have some time to get better information. And there's conceivably a process that, again, might be, I hear this might be a little unconventional to do an expanded background and reference check, but certainly within very talented individuals in this room, you could figure out what that might look like. And so for me, it's not necessarily a no/never, it's more of a, I'd like just a little bit of additional information to be able to have a better conversation with our candidate of what might some of those things be. Yes, there is a story of a past employment relationship that was only four months old. Let's understand more about what that is and do some more validation on that. If he were a police candidate, we would be all over it. And so why shouldn't we hold ourselves to that same level of threshold of information? It might be really unconventional, but also I'm okay being unconventional if it's the right thing to do. So thoughts on that? I guess my follow-up for that would be, I think we should consider a dual path. I think we should consider a broader reference check, background check information, and then follow that up with a second interview. Understanding, I believe Mr. Ga also is actively interviewing at other opportunities. We might lose him in that process, so that might mean we also may need to pivot for a broader list. But again, we'll echo Councilmember Roberts' position. We have somebody skilled doing the role today that I think, you know, a broader background check and a broader reference check may not take that much time. You know, again, the gap might not be long and might give us a lot more information. And again, to really just give the extra comfort level that he is the right person for the job, because again, the minute we make this decision, that information's going to be brought to us. And I feel very just flat-footed on making this decision because, again, our reference check was two references provided by the candidate and essentially a criminal background check and a credit check, but there's really nothing further. Chief, if we gave him the podium, he'd tell us a whole, you know, 15-minute dissertation on what our police candidates do. And again, I don't think that all of that is necessary, but there is some best practice that we could probably glean some good information from. Thoughts?
If you want to do a background check, do a background check, you know? But the whole idea, I mean, when we did the interviews, you're always wondering, there's always some apprehension, that kind of thing. And there was a couple of candidates that really came forward with their interview process. I think they really did a great job with the interview. And so...
And I think Mr. Ga was one of those candidates. I thought he did a good job. And I think also in our interview, he talked about his last experience and had a solid response for that, enough that we were all, you know, nobody was putting him at the bottom of the list. I think it's understanding just a little bit more of that. And sometimes a second day and just a little bit more reflection, it's good to have that additional confirmation and that, just that additional layer of scrutiny, just to have some more comfort level.
So how long would that take?
I don't know. I think it's probably, Amanda, do you have some thoughts?
Thank you, Your Honor, Counsel. Okay, so if I hear what the mayor said, it sounds like there's interest for a broader reference check, broader background check, and then a second interview. I would assume the second interview would be to sort of ask maybe more pointed questions about what is either found in the reference check, perhaps what Councilmember Roberts had, you know, found over the course of the last week, to allow him an opportunity to, Mr. Ga, an opportunity to provide context, to explain, whatever. That second interview, that could, could that be like a Zoom interview, so he wouldn't have to come, you know, fly back here? Drive back? I'm honestly not sure how he came here.
Potentially.
Okay. So if he was able to do it virtually, in terms of getting additional background, I would probably need, not probably, I would need a more definitive definition of what that background information is. Do you want additional references? Do you want a reference from each previous job? And are we asking this of the candidate themselves, or is it more direction to DDA to go out there and to reach out to the mayor and one council member from each of these cities? Or, you know, I'm not suggesting that's what you're saying, I'm just trying to get a parameter around what the background information would be.
I think it is more, whoever's doing the background check, it may or may not be DDA. I understand they've told us multiple times that our pivots just aren't part of their process, so that might not be the fit. There has got to be a way to, I don't know if it is random, if it is, I would be hesitant to call every single past council member, but just to get a broader spectrum in those communities that have been served. And as I'm saying that, I have to also say, this position of city administrator is challenging because so much of the fit, so much of the city administrator position is fit for the council at the time. And so we, in this process, may very well find information and people who have an opinion on any one of our candidates, any one of us, any one of our staff members, that it's just not good, but it's because it's just not a good fit. That could be a wonderful fit in another community with a different strategy, with different leadership. And so I just think the, but that doesn't mean we shouldn't at least ask the question and then give the candidate an opportunity to respond. And then in that, you get some sense of, is this somebody we can work with? Is this somebody that we trust? Do we find them to be straightforward? And I think that can only be kind of gleaned by going through that process. Because again, it's not a one piece of bad information and someone's out, it's more of in the broader context. Let's hear the other side, let's understand, how did you get to that position? And what's our comfort level with that candidate given that situation? It's not like we're hiring the best accountant who's going to take the best accounting positions. It is a little bit like hiring the attorney or the city engineer, right, where part of it is the art of being a professional. And there's a lot of different styles out there that are a lot of different fits. And that's where, again, I feel just so flat-footed in my one-hour interview with Mr. Ga, that some broader context is helpful. And really points out a limitation. We don't do this as cities very well. Like, how you make a decision after a one-hour interview with just this very limited and, there's just a better way. So again, it's unconventional, but the conventional path isn't great, so I'm okay.
Is that, making those reach outs, is that something that's in your purview?
Sure.
I'm not suggesting that, you know, I'm just wondering if we got to figure out who's going to make those phone calls, is that something that...
So initially, do you want me to see if this is something that DDA would do? And then if they don't, then the first, first of perhaps many pivots, but the first pivot would be pivot to, do you want me to start to dig into background? I'm, my only hesitation is, I'm a city attorney, and so that means you wear a lot of hats and your knowledge is like an inch deep and a mile wide, but it's still only an inch deep. And so I am not a recruiter, I do not have those skills.
Aren't there, outside of the police world, isn't this a common ask? Or isn't there somebody that does a broader reference check or a broader background check that is, there's got to be a solution out there that bridges the gap between the thorough, police, we check everything versus what we just had with DDA? There's got to be a service provider that's done some level of, again, additional... There's got to be a service provider that's done some level of, again, additional background slash reference check. And Chief, as you hear me talk about these things, does anything come to mind of what that might look like?
Yeah, so, police officer background checks are probably quite a bit different than possibly a city administrator or any other staff background check. And when I say that, usually it's former police officers who are hired to do this and they go through a lot of training and they have a lot of background and experience in police work. So they have certain questions they they ask, talk to certain references and it kind of goes down a different path. It's probably similar, I'm sure. It's not like doing a background on a police officer is going to be completely different by any means, you know? We throw in the physical, the medical exam, the psychological exam and those types of things, but the questions probably are somewhat similar. And in the police world too, it's different. If you're hiring for a police officer who just got out of the academy is a lot different than someone like me who has 28 years and and that's a very, much different looking background.
Okay.
So to answer your question, we have background, backgrounders that do background investigations, but I'm not sure if they would be interested or if they would have the knowledge to suddenly throw in a city administrator background.
Yeah.
But like you said, I'm sure there's, there's got to be firms out there and granted, I know that's what DDA was hired to do.
I mean, if DDA doesn't or are not equipped to do this level, maybe there's, you know, I mean, there's plenty of search firms, professional search firms that probably could take on that scope of work.
I mean, we did have a local firm here that may be able, that we did not select to do the search, but might be very well equipped to just do some, you know, it's, it's doing some, doing some Google searches, it's doing some, making some phone calls, getting some information from the candidate and then following that up with discussions and if that is something that they have done for other searches, maybe quite qualified for that and it might be worth, I mean, that's an expansion of our scope, right? There's some additional fees, but I, we need to get this right and so, and again, I, part of it is the, the lack of just cross pollination of information that we have with this candidate from how we, how we, you know, how we exist as a city that, a candidate pool that would have been more metro based, I'm not sure we would have felt as compelled to take this extra step, but it is, again, it's making a decision in an absence of information and as I was thinking about it today, driving here, I was like, there's ways to solve for that.
So I, I'd be open to that. I know this might, perception might be, you know, come on, you're elected officials, let's make a decision, let's finally make a decision, but sorry, we were bitten hard the last time, so twice shy, once bitten, twice shy. We really need to make sure this is the right person. This is an expensive proposition as well, if this doesn't go right. And so for that, I would be open, open to that.
Councilmember Valento brought up an idea, you know, brought up the point and this is something I also worry about of, do we just become this reputation of being difficult to work for and are, is a second candidate pool any better than the candidate pool that we have right now? If you're just coming in, we have a 6:30, you're all welcome to be here, no need to leave, we just have a 6:30 meeting that we have extended our time and we're going to extend it here for just a little bit, so bear with us, we will get started at the 7 o'clock meeting here in just a little bit, but you're welcome to stay. The, the one, the one thing that I would say is, we're not the only municipality that is struggling with this right now, right? One of my pointed questions to DDA is, we know that you have had two recent searches where you have had to go back and expand the pool and they did that and I would encourage everyone to read the article about the Anoka County search where they did that and they got a lot of qualified candidates and had a very second, very positive second go around. And so yes, it's, no one likes having to go back to the well, but we are not alone and some of those have had some very strong results. Also, we are paying a firm to do a search to present to the market, what is the opportunity here? And there is still a very strong opportunity here. We've put a really healthy salary on the table and so I just feel that by us doing this right isn't kind of precluding us from also having a strong candidate pool.
I agree. Does the candidate have a choice?
Well, I think the candidate always has a choice, right? I cannot, if this is unusual and Mr. Gah wanted to, you know, not participate in that process, then I think that's unfortunate, but I would certainly understand it's maybe outside the scope. And also, that's just the timeline, right? I do know he does have several other active searches underway and this may just naturally get outside of his timeline. I think that's part of the risk. Amanda, we've given you a lot just unscripted, right, of where this might go? Do you, I sense, so our next meeting isn't until after the 4th of July. I sense that we, you need some time to get some additional information and then we need time to react and to give some formal direction on that additional information. My sense is that we should probably get a special meeting scheduled between now and the 4th of July. And I'm not sure what the, what the turnaround time is for, you know, to do that, but I don't know, what are your thoughts?
Thank you, Your Honor, Council. So the, I think the first question probably is to Mr. Gah, if he is willing to entertain additional background check and second interview, because if he's not, then there's no point in in doing the legwork to see, you know, to to build out what that might look like. So that would be the, my first, and I guess my question is, do you want me to reach out to Mr. Gah or do you want me to ask DDA to reach out to Mr. Gah? Or do you just want me to sort of figure out the logistics behind the scenes?
I mean, if you have the ability to reach out to Mr. Gah, I, I think you heard directly from us tonight what is, what we're looking for and, you know, some of the positive feedback, but then also we'd like to go a little bit further. And so you're probably in the best position to communicate that to him, just in respect to Bart not hearing that and then trying to interpret what we're looking for. I think that makes sense and then to coordinate back with with Bart on, okay, given those concerns, how might DDA want to address those? And to the extent that's not an option, then I think obviously then we need to talk about what does that look like.
Right, and so, so if it's, if if Mr. Gah is open to it, then I think, then it's a matter of kind of building out what that would look like. It's not, I think it's a good idea to reach out, I can't remember the name of the search firm, but I have his contact information, the the local gentleman, I can't remember his name either, I'm sorry.
R. Emily.
Yeah, and just see if that would be something that he could facilitate, you know, if he could do the, that piece. If he can, great, then I think that's, I can update Council with that information and I think it, you know, this special meeting that we would be hosting would probably be that second interview would be the goal, because let him do his job to collect the the data and, you know, that kind of thing and then do the second interview, or and then set up the second interview for Council. If Mr. Gah says no to the broader reference check and the second interview, do you want me to then pivot and talk to DDA about putting this back out there to get more candidates or do you want to press pause?
I think we'll lose DDA in that particular scenario.
I, I think that that is, there is a chance of that, yes.
That's the message we got last time.
What? Why don't you understand from DDA what that looks like? And then I think our next step, it's obviously largely going to depend on that. I, I'm hesitant to push pause on this search, just for a couple of reasons. One, we have a current interim administrator who is doing a great job, but also is looking, right? And so we, that timeline is unknown and this just doesn't get easier, right? And so I'd rather us get that second search started, if that's what is, I hope it doesn't come to that, but if that's what it takes, I'd rather get that started and then build into that second search. I think we really need to have a conversation about that candidate profile. Now that we know what our first candidate profile produced, I'd like to understand what some of our neighboring counties have done to get a, the qualified list they got the second time, they did not get the first. That's what, whatever that magic was, is what we need. I feel like I'm doing a lot of talking here. Everyone, are we on an okay path?
Yeah, no, I like.
Yeah, I'm not opposed, I'm not opposed to the background check, I just, but there is some time essence here also that goes with it, so we gotta, we gotta make a decision here pretty soon, so. Couple of reasons.
Generally speaking, if we're looking for a, a special meeting before the 4th of July, are there any dates that Council wants me to know right now or not available?
I'm not available the 2nd or 3rd.
Okay, so ideally something between now and next Monday?
Just doing a quick search.
Yeah, I don't know what the, I don't think that would be an issue.
Yeah, so that essentially leaves us just the 1st.
We, we could do something later, later this week, special meeting, we need a three-day notice, so at this point, it's Thursday or Friday and that would be assuming we can notice it, well, okay, it's Friday and that's assuming that we can notice it tomorrow, right?
Correct, yeah. So Friday or Monday or?
Friday or Monday, so it's the 28th or the 1st.
Does Monday work for everybody? I, I feel that this is the type of question that, I'm not sure we're going to have actionable information on Friday.
I have no idea.
I'd hate to notice the meeting and cancel. How about, how about noticing a meeting for July 1st?
We, I think we have time for that and I'd much rather notice a meeting and cancel it than not properly noticing.
There's a number, and just to be clear, right, there's a number of pivot points, right? It might be, so we may or may not be doing further consideration of Mr. Gah, we may or may not be having DDA do, do some additional further consideration and then there's also kind of the third question about if, if it is needed that we need to do a secondary search, you know, what that looks like and DDA's willingness to do that. There's some information to gather, so I feel like probably worth meeting on Monday the 1st, but I think the agenda is really going to depend on the outcome of everything that just, everything I just said, right? Okay.
We can keep the agenda generic to city administrator discussion or something like that.
Okay. Amanda, I believe you had a couple of logistics.
I do. If, if there's nothing else about the next steps with the current candidate pool and the possible pivots, I, I need to get some clarity around a couple other things, but I don't, are we okay if I change the topic?
Yeah, any additional comments or?
No.
Okay, so Christina, Ms. Hahn, we have, when we signed on with her for the interim position, that really only contemplated her agreement through the end of this month. There wasn't, it isn't as though she's done as of the end of this month, but the assumptions around the time off and some things related to insurance and things like that were through the end of June. So presumably, she's obviously going to stay in the position for the time being. I need to bring forth an amendment to the Council with some modifications to that original agreement to allow for where we're at with her now. Specifically, one thing that has come up is she doesn't have any paid time off as a part of the agreement and she has mentioned that a couple of times, that that's difficult with, she's got a child and as a parent to be able to sort of manage summer activities, things like that. Are you comfortable with her having the same amount of paid time off as, do you, and I guess as an employee who would be a first year employee here, do you want her to be treated like she would be a, I think Patrick was treated as like a 20-year employee or something? I guess I need some guidance in terms of how much pay time off you're comfortable allowing her and it can be a monthly amount, it's not, you know, X days, it's X hours per paycheck or whatever, we can accrue it that way. And then secondarily, so I'll come back to that one. Secondarily, her contract does not contemplate any continuing education, but now that she's been in the position for a while and just with time, there is various continuing education things that are happening this summer that are timely. The next one is in, I believe, two, two weeks or three weeks and it's actually a, it's actually an airport conference that I will be attending as well, an ongoing education opportunity and she wanted to clarify that that was something, you know, she had the discretion to be able to sign up for things that could help her here or in her future employment, but I think I'm hopeful that Council recognizes the value to just educated administrators everywhere, being available to the, the community in general, big community. So if you're comfortable with her sort of having discretion to do continuing education and we can cap the hours, that, I would like to be able to include that in the amendment. I'm seeing head nodding, so that looks like that's not a concern. And then the, going back to the first thing, PTO, what would you like me to do for the PTO?
It seems like she's filling the role of city administrator that has historically come with a healthy level of PTO. I think, from my perspective, Christina works very, very hard, so I'm not concerned about an abuse of that PTO and so also in this, if this is going to be a longer term situation, it already is approaching a longer term situation than what we had originally contemplated. A year of no time off just is not good for anybody. So I would say what would be, I guess, if, if it's typical to be like the amount that would be for a kind of, what this position is advertised, kind of pro rata, seemed to make sense, but again, I can't imagine, I can't imagine she's asking for four weeks off or whatever that number of PTO is.
Kevin's checking on some numbers.
Okay, fair. I think maybe Amanda, you're looking for permission to be able to kind of negotiate and I, I think personally, I'm, I'm comfortable with that number of what would be reasonable for that position and what she's asking for. I would be surprised if there was a disconnect around asking comfort level, but certainly if there is, I can come back to Council.
Okay, so, and what, how about, how about we do this? I'll need to, I'll put this on the, the first meeting, so it'll be for July 8th. Obviously, I'll, I'll, I'll send it out to Council before that, so you know what these two terms are. If you're unhappy with it, you can reach out to me directly and let me know. Otherwise, it will be on that July 8th meeting and obviously you'll have to approve it. So if you're uncomfortable with, with whatever I've put in there, we can pull it and tweak it. Christina will be, I, I know that she'll work with, with me on that and then I, but I will tell her that it's fine for her to sign up for this, like I said, this particular airport conference that I think she needs to sign up like this week in order to be able to do it. So I'll tell her that that's okay, she can go ahead and do that and then we'll kind of memorialize that in the actual amendment. Is that, are you guys comfortable, is everyone comfortable with that?
Whatever.
Sounds good.
Okay, thank you.
All right, I think that is the end of our planned agenda for the special meeting, unless there's anything else, amend anything else for us?
No, Your Honor.
All right, I will entertain a motion to adjourn the special meeting. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion from Councilmember Valento, a second from Councilmember Husnick. All those in favor signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, and we're adjourned.